So they're providing a lot of information. Um, before we get too far in the agenda, I'm gonna ask your permission to allow Michelle to give a little bit of update on the webinar that her and I, her and I went or listened to on Tuesday from Maine Municipal in regards to revenues and budgets and really what this looks like over the next couple of months, because it's just gonna play a big factor in what we discuss um, the next few items. Um, I think I'm gonna hold most of my information until we get to it, Ed, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Can Michelle give a quick recap of the webinar?
Right now?
Yep.
Okay. Um, yeah, so basically, um, they talked about how this is going to affect revenues overall. Of course, our LRAT money comes from gas tax, less people are driving right now. Um, excise, a lot of people aren't buying new cars, so you're, you're losing out on that, the, the big first year registration excise. Um, they're anticipating fifteen to twenty-five percent loss in excise. Um, revenue share, uh, they imagine that, you know, we're gonna see, um, at least a five percent loss there. Um, home set, they're anticipating that, um, currently we're being reimbursed at seventy-five percent, that legislature might put in something where we're not reimbursed the full seventy-five, we're reimbursed fifty. There's a lot of up in, you know, up in the air about everything. Um, you know, this is new to everybody. You know, it's not something that happened gradually, you know, as in most recessions, this is kinda just happening quick. And so we don't know exactly what the impacts are going to be. And really, we won't have a good, a good estimate, um, for another month to see what, uh, you know, allowing more things to open, our revenue share is, you know, it's based on people out there spending money. Um, and if we're home not spending money, then that's affecting what's coming in. So, um, and of course, rec revenue, uh, ambulance services, uh, runs are down, you know, less people wanna hop on an ambulance, you know, if they can just stay at home and, and stick it out, or whether they drive themselves. So, um, we'll see a pretty big hit in revenues. And, um, so I've tried to make some guess, guesses on what that's gonna do at tax commitment time, and I've done a twenty-five percent reduction. Uh, for the most part, all around, there are some things that are, that are gonna stay the same. Uh, it, two weeks into all of this, uh, the interest rates at the bank dropped, um, a half a percent, yeah, a half a percent from what we were earning. So it didn't take long for that to happen. Uh, but.
Yeah, so the.
Feeling.
Yeah, and that's really what the two, we had two speakers. One was the Bitterford City Manager, and the other one was from, where was he?
Brunswick.
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 And so they were kinda, I mean, they were similar cities, but they were, I mean, it was very, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna be interesting to, to watch this next few months. So when we get into the budget piece, and I wanted to give a quick update, Ed, just so that when we get to the budget, budget piece, we can kinda, you'll have a better idea of why we're making the recommendations we are.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Anything else, Jennifer, from the town administrative side?
Not yet, no, thank you.
So you're all set, Jen, for?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
For now, yep.
Okay, so move on to warrants and bills. Um, I would, I stopped in last night and signed. I know Kim signed.
Yep.
I did it at six o'clock this morning.
Okay, so all the warrants and bills have been signed?
Good.
Okay. Uh, let's see, approval to, uh, we typically don't do, do a vote on the bills, do we?
No.
No, okay.
Nope.
Okay, so I need a vote on the, what your, what your wishes on the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Dave made the motion. Kim, would you second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Call for roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Yes, Tim?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay. Uh, minutes of the last meeting? The wishes.
I, I went through them, and, um, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the last meeting. I'm just trying to remember what the date was. Was it the?
It was the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, so I make a motion to approve the minutes of the twenty-second selectmen's meeting, April twenty-second.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was the April twenty-second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Department heads and committee chair updates, tabled. It's, it's a little difficult to do that one over, over this. Do we get it completely figured out? Hopefully, by the time we get all this figured out, we'll be back doing our regular meetings. Okay, old business, um, July election and town meeting.
Okay, so, uh, the easy part with your approval, um, is that we need to, we need an actual motion, uh, from the Board of Selectmen to move the election, um, from June ninth to July fourteenth to coincide with the state. However, um, before you do that, I'm gonna talk a little bit about town meeting, um, so I can give you the, the news that I learned today. Um, so, when the governor made her announcement yesterday, um, what she said was that for the month of May, we can have no more than ten people in a room together. Um, as I understand it, June and July, according to the phases, um, she is going to allow fifty people in a room together. Uh, she was very clear to say that, um, not to expect it to, to be loosened up any more than that. If anything, she would tighten the reins if they feel like the pandemic, uh, gets out of, out of control in any way. So, the first thing that I thought of yesterday when I heard this is, you know, okay, what are we gonna do July eighteenth if we move the town meeting date, uh, to that Saturday to coincide with the election? So Michelle and I kind of chatted aside about some of the different options that, that were out there, and I sent an email to, uh, Maine Municipal, and Richard Fullwell and the senior attorney called me first thing this morning, and we had a conversation. Um, it was a, a brief, it didn't take long to get to what our option was. Um, and the option, as far as, uh, the attorneys at Maine Municipal see it, um, are simple. Uh, we vote town meeting by secret ballot. Um, you cannot, as a registrar or as a clerk, cannot allow, I, I can't, we can't say that fifty people can come to town meeting in July. We, we, we have a governor's executive order, uh, which Fullwell and was very clear that is, you know, can be punishable by, by jail. Whether people agree with it or not, it is an executive order. Uh, we're government officials, and it has to be followed. So we know that July eighteenth, we can't have more than fifty people in a room. Do we take our chance that more than fifty won't show up? At fifty-one voters, the entire count, town meeting is, is canceled and shut down. Do we split the two, you know, split the schools, split the town? Maybe we won't have more than fifty. It's just not a chance we can take. You can't deny someone's right to vote. So.
My question is, the secret ballot, how would that, how would we do that?
So, yep.
Let Jen finish.
Yep.
Yeah, she'll give us all the info.
So, so what that looks like is that Tuesday, July fourteenth, when people come to vote, um, they're going to get a variety of ballots. They would get, and, and this is, we would be pushing absentees more than we ever have because of the extensiveness behind it. Um, but essentially, you would get a candidate's ballot, which would have your selectmen on it and your school committee members. Um, any petitions or referendums would be on another ballot. You would get your state ballots. Uh, we would have a ballot that would have all the school referendum questions on it. So basically, when you go to town meeting and every question, you hear the moderator read out loud, that's a ballot question. That's a yes or no ballot question. Um, if you looked, did any, uh, research on it, the Town of Lebanon votes this way every year. I mean, it's seventy, eighty questions. They voted this way for the last X amount of years. Um, Richard, uh, Mr. Fullwell and did say to me, I cannot encourage your board enough to take a serious look at that, that warrant and do some consolidating. So, you know, when Michelle and I sat down and went through the warrant today, and, and what we need to do is have a, have a workshop of the five of us and the public can, can watch, just to go through the warrants. I mean, there are little things that, you know, we can certainly recommend to you, like all your social services, you know?
Can we do that as?
Yeah, you, I mean, it's your ballot, it's your warrant. You can combine whatever, you know? How much of the fire department can we put on one, on one? How much of the roads can you put on one? That's a conversation we need to have, not tonight, but.
Right.
Every, you know, every ballot, every question is gonna be, you know, yes or no, just like they were at town meeting, but it's gonna be on a piece of paper. Um, so that's, that's the, you know, that's really the only option as they see it, uh, with the pandemic and staying in line. Um, one of the questions, after, after the fact questions that came up, um, was what do we do about the, what do we do about the seats that we elect at the beginning of town meeting? You know, we elect Forrest, and we elect the Warren Finance, and what happens with that? Um, and you can see me glaring to the side. I'm looking at, uh, something from Maine Municipal. If you haven't had a chance to read your April, um, book, the kind, the Townsmen that comes in, at the very end, there is, uh, legal notes, and there's municipal votes and boards. And, uh, Mr. Fullwell and pointed me towards this. Um, and what it says in here, I'm gonna lose it, just picked them on the spot, is essentially, this, everybody that's in the seats, stay in those seats until the next election, even if it goes over term. And this is going to, going to take effect for Kim's seat, it's gonna take effect for Mrs., uh, Ms. Shane's seat and Mrs. Burris's seat. So their terms are not gonna end. So anybody who's terminated firing June thirtieth, based on this law, stays in until the next election. Now, here we go. It's called elected officials hold over if annual election is delayed. And. The holdover doctrine is longstanding and well-established general rule of municipal law in the state of Maine. This is something that's been in place for many, many, many years, uh, several, yeah, my computer's acting up, but it's on the last page of the legal note. So, at the end of the day, what that means is that any Warren Finance committee member whose term ended June thirtieth continues in that position until the next election. So, you know, when we get all through this, you know, that's down the road. I mean, we, you know, we know how we're handling the municipal, municipal officers. Those open seats on the smaller committees will have to deal with at another time. Essentially, they'll stay in. Um, so that's, that's how town meeting and, uh, the election looks.
Okay.
A lot of ballots and a lot of questions.
Yep.
Uh, you would be required to have a public hearing. Um.
How do we go about that?
Yeah, do they have a clue how that would happen via Zoom?
Yep, so it would, it would be just like this. Um, the only thing that, that's different is that, you know, we would set it up, because it is a public hearing, people have to have the right to, to ask their questions. Um, so our IT guy behind the scene will set it up so that, um, people can raise their hand and press that button and type in their question, uh, so that you can respond to them. Michelle can, can test, this is how it was at our seminar the other day with Maine Municipal. You could raise your hand, type in your question so that the people running the meeting could see it and have a chance to answer it.
Okay.
So there are ways to do it. We just have to kinda get our bearings together and, you know, it's, it's a lot of work. It's gonna be, it's gonna be some work.
Yep. Dave, did you have questions for Jennifer?
Nope.
Okay, Kim?
Nope.
Okay.
Actually, no, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
So, you have these finance committee members and these, these members that are voted in, you know, conservation, all that, beginning there, and they're gonna hold over the next one. So at the end of the day, do we figure on having a special meeting later on in life just for those, stuff like that, or do we wait for the next town meeting?
That's gonna be.
You don't wanna have it as a ballot, a ballot question, because it never happens.
And you can't, right, and you, and you can't. And we, and I talked about that with Richard. He said that, um, if they're, if they're voted on and elected by open town meeting like that, we can't change the style. So, because that was the question, how do we take nominations? You will have that option, David, along with the other board members, say, okay, you know, it's, it's the end of Octo, it's October, let's hope, it's December, whenever.
So does that mean you have to wait a whole year?
No, you can have an open town meeting anytime. Maybe, you know, some account gets overdrawn, or maybe you have some emergency that comes up. You're having a, you know, special town meeting for something else, you could put those articles on there at any time.
Okay. Or are we gonna?
Correct.
Okay, Dave?
So this, uh, doing our budget, our, our towns, our town meeting by, uh, ballot, um, if something gets turned down, okay, say like, okay, we'll use the roads or the transfer station, we'll use the transfer station, which we, you know, whatever. If that budget got voted down, do we revert back to last year's budget?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, um, so, the only, the only issue I can, I can see for coming with that scenario going that way, um, the last two town meetings we've had, um, we've had a zillion changes to the article, amendments.
And you can't.
You won't be able to do that. So, um, which, I mean, we, we put forward the warrant that we want, but, um, I, I have a, I'm not, not talking for the finance committee, but I can't imagine, I guess they can discuss that, but when, when are we gonna have to make this, this decision on this?
It's, unfortunately, it's not a decision for you to make. Um, it's either, I mean, you, you, it, we don't have any other option. We don't have, we don't have any other legal way to hold a town meeting and move a budget forward unless we vote on it by secret ballot.
Well, if, how long can we go on with the last year's budget? Like, cause we're already gonna do that anyways when we go into July for that short period of time. Just for, you know, just, just throwing it out there, but how long can we maintain that into the next fiscal year?
Without having a town meeting?
Without having town meetings.
Michelle, do you know the answer to that?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, but I can say that we can't commit town, we can't commit taxes without a town meeting. So it would have to be by August.
Okay, yeah, by the, by the middle of.
And August is still doing the fifty, the fifty people per, still in August.
She, well, she said June and July was fifty. She hoped, hoped to open it up in August, but I, I'm not sure that's something I bank on, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I thought I read July and August. Uh, okay, yeah.
Let me pull it up, David. Let me pull it up.
I did too.
I could be wrong.
It said, yeah.
So I thought, cause July, August were together.
Well, no, July was, I know July was fifty, because that's, we wouldn't be having this conversation about town meeting.
But it was like July slash August was the same.
Okay. Okay, so here we go. This is from Maine Municipal.
Do you know what I mean, like the?
Yeah, you're right. So it says, stage three, July slash August. Stage three maintains or gatherings of more than fifty people in the fourteen-day quarantine on people entering Maine. So, so it is still fifty, I guess, in August.
Yeah, so, so we, bottom line, we've gotta, we've gotta do it by secret ballot.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we gonna still do, we're gonna include the, uh, school budget at the same time, correct?
Yes, and I, um, I, and I wanna, we're gonna talk, budget goes into the next thing. I did, uh, talk to the superintendent. We've been trying to communicate as much as we can as we go through this. It was Maine Municipal's recommendation that we do separate ballots. I mean, this is gonna be, uh, you know, a, a lot of information. I mean, a lot of reading, a lot of research, you know, it's gonna be a lot for the voter to sit down and go through and, and vote this through. So, we are looking to make it as simple as possible. That's why we wanna consolidate. But we would be putting the school on one ballot, putting the town on another ballot, um, because you have to remember too, we're gonna have whatever state ballots, um, give us. You know, right now, I know that we have, um, some referendum questions. We have all of our county, local, we have our legislative, and we have our primaries for them. So you're looking at showing up to the polls with three, five, maybe I'm guessing six plus ballots.
Yeah. So we'll have to consolidate the town ballot.
Take quite a while.
Yeah, yeah. And then a lot of it's gonna be educating the voter as well, so.
Right. And I think that as we go into this next one, um, going into the budget, hopefully that's gonna be a little easier to do based on the, you know, the, the work that Michelle and I have done to kinda present to the people.
Right. Okay, Dave and Kim, do either one of you have anything else for the election and the town meeting? And if not, we'll move into the budget side of it.
I think I'm good. So, to move the actual election to June fourteenth, uh, July fourteenth, excuse me, you do need to make an actual motion for that, cause it was, it was June ninth.
Okay, do I hear a motion to move the town election and, uh, what's the best way to word this? Social?
Town election, and really town meeting, cause it starts that day.
Yeah, move town meeting to July fourteenth, um, which will be a ballot, by ballot questions.
I've lost Ed.
I'm here.
Kim's frozen, let's give her a sec.
Yep.
Dan, can you pop on for a sec? Oh, she's back, never mind.
So the election, the election's on July.
Okay, yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, July fourteenth.
Okay, yeah.
So all, all town, all town meeting, I guess all town meeting business, all businesses that would pertain to the town meeting, including elections and budget process, budget voting on, uh, July fourteenth. Someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We, uh, move town meeting to the ninth to July fourteenth for a special town meeting. Can we call that?
It's, well, it's gonna be our annual town meeting.
Annual, annual town meeting.
It's gonna be an annual town meeting run by referendum.
Run by referendum, yeah.
Do I hear a second?
Now I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second that. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Annual referendum.
All right.
And, what'd you say, Jennifer? And your referendum and budget?
Yeah, it's really just our annual town meeting will be moved to July fourteenth. Because when we have that election on Tuesday, it actually, this is the start of the town meeting.
Right, okay, okay. So, it's moved and seconded, that we move the election and town meeting to July fourteenth by referendum? Any further discussion? Okay, call for a vote, Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Did you hear my yes?
Yes, and the chair votes yes. Okay, Jennifer.
Okay, Michelle. We, do we have a project before us? Okay, that's fine. So next week, next week, we'll bring to you, um, our recommended articles, you know, warrant articles put together, and we'll kinda go through them all together. Because, remember absentee validating, I mean, we, we've got time, and we don't have a whole lot of time, because we have to give absentee ballots out when the state's ready. Losses thirty days, they shoot for forty-five, so.
Right, and we have to have a, uh, we have to have a public hearing.
We have to have a public hearing, and we have to, um, Warren and Finance recommendations have to go on the ballot.
Yes. As soon as we get the consolidated ballot, our consolidated wording.
Right. We should be able to whip together after we talk about this next budget.
Okay, okay. Move on to, we've done, okay, moving on to the gym, is that correct?
Uh, no, budget.
Budget, okay, I thought we just kinda talked about budget, but, okay.
So I'm gonna let Michelle give a breakdown, but I just wanna kinda cap where we got here. So last week, you had, um, you, you kinda made a statement that, um, and tasked us with saying, you know, with these, with these times that are the way they are, we just can't think about, you know, increases and increasing the tax rate at a time like this. I mean, we talked about how many people we still had unemployed, waiting for unemployment, and it's just tough times. And we heard the treasurer talk about revenue losses, and we just don't know how hard this is gonna hit. So, putting together, um, a budget that is as fiscally responsible as possible is, is more, you know, is needed now more than, more than anything. Um, last week, we know that we needed to cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to flatline the budget. And that was based on what the treasurer's recommendations last were, last week were based on revenue. She was gonna move, uh, undesignated funds, she was gonna move forward and based on the revenue she was using. Since the workshop and everything that they've pointed out, she told you in the beginning that she's cut the amount of revenue. So, instead of cutting a hundred and fifty thousand, um, we put together, uh, recommendations that will cut, uh, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand out of the budget. It will allow the twenty-five percent less revenues that, uh, she's expecting, um, but it will increase the undesignated fund balance use of four hundred thousand. So, um, Michelle, you wanna go through step by step the numbers that we came up with?
Sure. Um, so the first place, I started with salaries, uh, flatlining everybody, uh, no three percent, no increase in the fire department hourly wage. Um, so everybody's staying the same on wages.
Town one, every employee.
Every employee.
Yep.
Um, that gives us, um, with taxes, uh, and insurance, that gives us, uh, almost sixty-one thousand dollars there. Um, removing the planner from the land use budget of twenty-four thousand. Removing the electronic CPR device that the fire department requested for nineteen thousand. Flatlining road general maintenance on both sides. That's a reduction, we had in, we had discussed an increase of forty thousand apiece, flatline it to what it currently is this year. Um. Disgust, um, putting forward two hundred thousand dollars for paving for each district. Um, I'm proposing, uh, giving them a hundred and fifty each for paving. That takes away fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars for each side. Um. And cutting the APAT capital improvement purchase. Uh, he had two requests. Um, this allows for the one that he said that was, uh, most priority, um, and takes out the IMAC Pro. That's a savings of nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. And then taking the gym out, um, of the budget, where we don't know where, we don't know what's happening there. Um, so it's a total reduction of almost, almost three hundred thousand dollars. That gives us a flatlined budget with putting four hundred thousand dollars forward from the undesignated fund. And I've taken some reductions in motor vehicle, boat, uh, building and plumbing, uh, of course, interest, um, gym fees, town pool use, um, and some other miscellaneous services have been, um, brought down a little bit on what the, what we estimate to put forward. So, I mean, these are just ID, things that I came up with, things that were above and beyond this current year. Uh, but I'm open to making any changes if the board wishes.
Okay, so it's, I guess my first question is, if we put four hundred thousand out of undesignated funds, do we have enough left in under, undesignated funds?
Yes.
Okay, well, well above the.
For this year anyhow. I mean, we don't know what next year's gonna bring us.
Right, right.
You know, it will, it'll cover for this year.
Yeah, okay.
Is the, uh, is the fire truck the payment, is this figuring on, the fire truck as a payment? And the payment figured into it?
Yes.
The new tanker loan is still in there. Uh, and this is a good time to, to mention too, that I, I told you in the beginning, I had been speaking to the superintendent. Um, he is, they do have a school board meeting next week, and they are going to take another look at their budget as well. Um, they certainly understand that the tough times are going on right now, and they're gonna take another look and see if there's anything they can do. Um, it's also important to note that their budget was already lower than it was last year. So, uh, it already came in lower, so it wasn't gonna affect it anyways, so, but they, they do, they do hear you, and, um, are gonna take a peek at it Monday.
Okay. Okay, um, so nothing was touched, nothing was touched as far as health insurance or anything like that, that's?
No, benefits weren't touched.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's looking like this year, we might, we might lack the health benefits because a lot of people aren't using their insurance right now.
Yeah.
So rates are dropping.
Might not see a drastic, you know, increase there, which is great. Um, yeah, so we, we try not to touch anybody's benefit, we try not to touch anything that was already there.
Okay.
Um, just slowing things down from growth. But, I mean, that's what, kinda what we have to do, you know, during this difficult time, not knowing what, you know, the future holds for the economy.
Right, and the, uh.
So when we.
The road guys typically get ninety-nine, what was it, ninety thousand apiece? So it's actually going up by almost fifty thousand, by a little, like, by, what, sixty thousand?
Right. Yeah, we had talked about going up, giving them each, you know, basically an extra hundred thousand.
Right.
Um, on their paving, and each an extra forty thousand on their general maintenance. And this just gives them each fifty thousand dollar, uh, yeah, about fifty thousand dollars each on their paving, so that they can get something done, because, I mean. I don't try to, we're a lot of back in the room, but they're bad.
Yeah, yeah, you can't do much for a hundred thousand, but you can do something for a hundred and fifty, so.
Right, right, and I did.
They had ninety-nine thousand for paving.
Yeah, so it went up sixty thousand. I did speak to both road commissioners before the meeting. Yeah, so it went up 60,000. I did speak to both road commissioners before the meeting. I think that, um.
50,000, 51.
Yeah.
I spoke to both of them before the meeting, um, because I wanted them to know what we were proposing. Um, they both understood the hard times and things that, you know, what the town and the state and the country was going through for that matter. Um, and they understood and appreciated the, the 50,000 increase that was there. I mean, that gives them something. Um, and hopefully, you know, now that we're talking about putting that into a secret ballot, for them, it is a flatlined budget. It's gonna be, the tax rate's not gonna go up any, you know, it's, so hopefully we're making it easier on the voters, but.
Right.
I mean, Michelle, I went through line by line and a pretty big, a big cut that we've come up with.
Oh, yeah, no, you, you, both of you did a tremendous job on that in a very short order, so. Uh, Dave, you got anything else you wanna add to this?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's a 51,000 dollar increase each side.
Yeah.
For the paving, which is, um, honestly, um, that's not too shabby. And, you know, if we can, just because we only gave him 51 this year, you know, if things pick up, we can continue on. I like small increment. Um, you know, I mean, actually, uh, District One is actually getting, I think, 10,000 more than he asked for. Um, so, um, I think that works out good. Uh, at the same time, I believe, I think District One still has paving money from last year. So he's got, he'll have a, a pretty good chunk of money coming into the, uh, spring here for paving, and I think Joe's, I don't know how much Joe's got. Is there any, uh, reserve money in those accounts?
Um, in, um, District One hasn't spent anything. Um, District Two, there's roughly about 32,000 maybe.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And those will.
So, you know, so at the end of the day, he'll have 180 some thousand dollars roughly, that's paving, that's a pretty good start.
Yeah.
So, um, other than that, I don't, I don't see anything. Uh, Bob, we flatlined Bob at the transfer station, correct? Yeah, cause he was only asking like 3,500, but, you know, just because of the increase in demo.
Right.
He was fine with that, correct?
Uh, we, we left that. The only thing that was taken out of the budgets are salaries.
Okay, okay.
We took out the 3% increase, so all town employees will receive the same rate of pay that they were, were currently getting. So his extra for demo, that was left in. You know, our postage line, for example, postage went from 50 to 55 cents or somewhere around there. Those lines had to go up, you know what I mean? What you see on there is just a reduction. And I, I just want, and I hate to, I, I just wanna make sure that, I mean, and to say this, because I know there's a lot of active people, I mean, every department head and every employee, every department head that we talked to, they're trying to flatline budgets or flatline salaries, we're giving 100%, you know, they, they, you know, they had no qualms about it. I mean, they, you know what I mean? They understood and supported, wanted, we all wanna do our share, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
I was, uh, I was wondering, oop, go ahead.
I was gonna say, this isn't gonna last forever, so, I mean, it might be a year or two, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't see it lasting forever anyway. If it does, then the whole world's, you know, got big, big issues, more than we have right now, so, you know, it's another year or two, we can try to readjust some of these and get back to where we were, so, um, go ahead, Dave.
Um, seeing, uh, the transfer station, um, I don't know, Michelle, have you, have you spoken to Bob at all, whether or not, uh, seeing we're not recycling right now, uh, everything's going in the, uh, the container? Has he mentioned anything about maybe an, an increase in cost due to that?
Um, well, uh, Bob and I had a discussion a while ago about adding fees for certain things. Um, but as far as an increase of costs, no, I mean, we, we pay the same amount. Um, we budget those revenues. I have reduced those revenues in the revenue estimate for putting towards taxes, so, uh, he, he has not mentioned an, an increase in cost.
Well, I, I'm just talking about the, uh, the, um, compactor itself, cause then we're putting everything in the compactor, whether or not.
Oh, I'm confused, you're saying, yeah.
On that side of it.
No, I, I do know that, you know, he's, he's had some good lines, but, um, I haven't seen any bills yet. Of course, it's early to see. I haven't seen any bills yet that are out of the norm.
He believes that a lot of the people, oops, sorry, he believes that a lot of people are holding on to their recycling. Um, he did tell me that, that he took a little bit of cardboard last week. He came up with a little way to do two lines and kind of separated and, you know, he had to take a little cardboard and, um, and, and we're gonna need to have a conversation about, you know, maybe reopening that, or he's got another plan and putting stuff outside and hopefully we can talk about that for, for next week, but he doesn't, he, the conversation I'm having with him, he's not seeing a lot more going in there. You're seeing the lines because we're socially, you know, distancing ourselves and it's one hour at a time, but he thinks a lot of the people are holding on to the recycling, so he thinks those numbers will come around.
I was thinking maybe a lot of people haven't come up either because they're not supposed to. So maybe the, the, the amount of people from Massachusetts and stuff that normal would be dumping in there this spring probably aren't up yet.
Yeah.
Okay, just, we're just wondering.
Okay, New Hampshire wise, um, not that it means anything because we're in Maine, but several of the, several of the transfer stations in New Hampshire that stopped doing recycling have restarted doing recycling again, and the ones that did close have reopened. So some of that's lightening up as they're finding out more about the COVID-19 virus and, you know, they're finding that it's not as much of a, the, the products they're bringing in is not necessarily the way that people will catch this. It's more airborne, so that is still holding true, so. Okay, uh, Kim, anything?
Um, no, I don't think so. I mean, um, I kind of went through the donations and stuff, um, just to kind of see, were those all flatlined too, or did we do increases, keep the increases that people asked for?
I, I didn't touch the donations, um, but I, I certainly, we certainly can, we can flatline them. We had a couple of new ones. Um, not sure what direction the board wants to go on.
I don't know what any. And that was gonna be one of the, one of the things that we can, hoping the next week we can take that warrant and we can first go through it and see if there's anything you want to eliminate. And that would be one of the areas that we would focus on. Um, it leaves flatlining last year's social services.
Well, that's what I, yeah.
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 And, and Michelle can tell us what that looks like and what kind of savings that is. You, Michelle, you said we had.
I think it's around 7,000.
That's, I mean, 7,000, 7,000. But then again, how many of those, you know, we would need to look at those services and say, okay, are those services needed more now because people are out of work? You know, could it be tied to the pandemic? So we would need to look at what agencies those were.
Looking pretty.
Do you know the names of the two new ones by chance off the top of your head, Michelle?
Um, I have it right in front of me, hold on. Um, New Beginnings, uh, which is a shelter out of Lewiston, I believe, uh, a teen shelter. Um, and apparently they, they did house one act and teen this year because everything down here was full. Um, and the other new one is Public Radio, being Public Radio.
I think they tried last year.
Yeah, they've, they've tried a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll put on focusing on the warrant, Ed, next week.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, anything else on the budget from either Dave or Kim? Nope.
No, I, I think we've, uh, I think you guys have done a good job there.
Definitely.
Doing what we've gotta do here. Um, so, yeah, thanks.
Okay, Kim, anything?
No, I just, uh, you know, appreciate all the hard work both you girls have, uh, put into this. Um, it's not gonna be easy to have to cut it all back, but I'm glad, you know, um, people are on board and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Jennifer and Michelle, anything else you two wanna add?
I, I can't think of anything I wanna add.
Okay, okay. I guess at this point we'll move on to the gym.
So I do have a lot of emails and a lot of letters and, and, and I just wanna kind of give you the synopsis. I mean, I know that we told people that if they had questions, we would, we would read them in, but. So he, so here's the thing on the gym. So now that, now that we know that everything is gonna be voted on by secret ballot, the decision you guys have to make is simple. Are you going to put it on the secret ballot? That's, that's really what it comes down to. Um, so reading all of these emails, I mean, you, they're gonna, I mean, I, let's just say I have 12, to save the conversation. I have 12, probably nine of them are in support of it. There are at least three or four that, that are saying, you know, it's tough, but you should close it. Um, they're well-written emails, um, and, and I want, want you to read each and every one of them, but it will take some time to read them all aloud. I think that when we were first talking about, when we were talking about whether or not we were gonna keep it open or put it on the ballot, or was it gonna be a ballot or a town meeting, some of these might have really mattered, you know, the detail of what they say. But now that we know that everything has to be on a tal, on a town meeting or on a secret ballot, that's what most of these are, are saying to you, you know, give us a chance to vote on them. Um, so if you decide to vote on it, I mean, a few things that, that need to be taken into consideration. First of all, we did take the 4,600 dollars out of the budget for the gym, and we did that based on believing that you're probably gonna make this a ballot question, and we obviously couldn't have it in there twice. So we knew it was coming out from our end, and if you made it a ballot question, it would be going back in. So it, whatever number you put back in for the gym is going to affect the, affect the tax rate unless you find another area to cut, unless our revenues change, or unless you take more out of the undesignated fund. So you, I, I need you to think about that, you know what I mean? Our flatline that we presented to you was without the gym.
Right.
So if a gym article passes, the tax rate goes up.
Okay.
Um, so we need to take that into consideration. We need to, and then we need to fairly quickly come up with a, a fair number on the, on the fitness center. I mean, we could easily come up with the, um, electricity and the heating, you know, by taking a three-year average. Um, we have a list of, of recommendations from main municipal, they are recommendations. Some they're insisting on, you know, others are just recommendations. We have the premiums, we have a lot of things to take into consideration. How do we come up with a, a, a good, solid, fair number to put on the ballot?
And then we're still at the same problem. Who's gonna, who's gonna clean over there on a regular basis? Meaning two to three times a day because we still have this pandemic floating around?
Well, and, and so according to the shutdown, and there's a couple of them, according to the shutdown, the gyms I think can reopen in June. And it is important to note that more than one resident, um, in here said that, you know, it's not necessary to clean that often. So I wanna make sure that I point that out on, on their behalf. Um.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait a minute. If we open up in June, we're still under restrictions, but you don't have to clean that often?
I'm just.
Yeah.
Right now, everybody's cleaning everything, washing.
I would think.
Twenty times a day. I mean, it, that doesn't make any sense.
I don't even see us opening the gym back up until August or September, even if we decide to keep it. So even if it passes through town.
If the gym did open up.
Yeah. Go ahead, Kim.
Right.
I was gonna say. Oops, sorry.
And if it wasn't until then.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kim.
Oops, still there, Kim?
Okay, I was, I was gonna say, yeah, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I, i- if, if we didn't open up until August, I mean, I would think that, you know, a lot of gyms too, you wipe down the equipment after you use it. You know, there's, there's the alcohol wipes right there. So every time you get off a piece of equipment, and then on top of that, we're gonna have to have somebody come in and at least clean daily.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep.
But the volunteers feel like they could do that, just so you know.
How can we, we can't be guaranteed a volunteer's gonna do it.
Right.
That's, that's, that's my only problem. I, I wholeheartedly love the idea that, that someone would do that, but we better have a guarantee, you know, it's, it's, you know, this thing is.
We've, we've found in the past that, you know, volunteers, you know, it's all great and all that, when everybody's gone home at the beginning, then about six, seven months down the road, you know, uh, next thing you know, someone's off on vacation or whatever, we don't know. We're, at the end of the day, we are responsible for what happens in that, that, that building because it's a town of active building. But, uh, I mean, I, I've been pondering some ideas, trying to figure out one way to make this, was, is that some, is that you guys making that noise? Like, do you pair of those, don't ringing noise or something? Okay, um, but what I'm, uh, what I've been pondering is, you know, we, we talked before, um, about merging it and this and that, and, you know, I, I, issue that I have with it is, it's, it's not a department. We don't really have any reins over private individuals and making sure, telling someone they have to get, go down and make sure this is done and that's done, where, um, you know, if, if they did, if say we decide that we, we, they wanna keep it, the town wants to keep it, we have to have some sort of plan. And I think the plan should be, you know, put forward at, you know, at the ballot, so people know how this plan is gonna go forward.
I do too.
And, and the only conclusion that I can come up with, you know, I, I really think there should be some sort of committee for that, you know, uh, for that gym, so we have some oversight. Um, and I've talked to some people that, you know, uh, are on, you know, that go to the gym and stuff, and they, they're kind of already doing that, but, uh, it's something we'd have to make official. But at the same time, um, you know, I haven't, we haven't talked, I haven't talked to a rec, I'm not the liaison or nothing, but I just throw some ideas out, so, you know, this is just, take it as you will. But, uh, is it something that maybe we can, you know, put together something so we have a budget? So we have somewhere, someone to do the budget in for this, um, you know, merge it with a rec or something? You know, it's a sporting thing. And then you turn around and say, okay, we bring back the, um, um, what do you call that, the guy, uh, director?
Director.
Okay, we, we need someone to oversee this. We need someone to collect the dues, someone to make sure that it's stopping and make sure that, you know, uh, people are there, you know, that are supposed to be there. Make sure it's being cleaned, stuff like that. And that stuff, I, I don't really believe that, you know, the, the ladies, you know, Jennifer and, you know, the people at the town hall, really, that's part of their, their repertoire, you know? And, uh, you know, because if it does get voted in, we have to have some sort of plan.
Right.
And, and, and I just, I'm just, what I'm worried about is if we have to dump, um, public monies into essentially a, a private organization, you know, it'd be, um, you know, um, we have to have some sort of budget in, and we have to have somebody to do the budget in. So we either have to create a committee, merge it with another committee, or, uh, but we have to have something that, you know, can come to us with numbers and issues. Cause right now, we, if we say we had an issue down there and people started getting sick, who do you go to? Are we gonna go to some volunteers?
Well, and if I can.
It's really, it's still gonna come back on us.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna jump in on. So adding it, putting, I mean, I, I've tried to, you know, putting it to another committee, honestly, we're just moving the buck down the line a little bit. And I, you know what I mean? The, at the end of the day, that committee, or, I mean, we either have to fix all the issues that are there and just, you know, and, and deal with them head-on, making it, giving it to the rec committee or getting, you know, making this director now responsible for all of it, you know what I mean? That's just one more employee that you're gonna have to oversee. And, and, I mean, we're gonna have to make sure that that employee is going in and checking it four or five times a day. I mean, we're still gonna have the problem with the keys, that people are using them, that have no releases over there. All of main municipal's concerns aren't gonna go away because we, and I don't, I'm not being, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, we're just, we're moving it to someone else that, at the end of the day, David, your, your guys are still gonna be responsible for those people. The committees don't have any, you know, they're still gonna come to you.
That's why you have, you have, you know, that's why I threw in the director part. We have, we had money set aside for a director. Um, I, I'm not sure how the rec's doing, I'm sure they're fine, but I just, you know, I know they were, they wanted to use the rooms in there for keeping their stuff and this and that, thought that we can, if we, if we turn this into a, some sort of town entity, then we have some oversight on it. Right now, all we're doing is passing keys out, taking some dues and this and that, and then when we turn around. Yeah?
I was gonna say, for, you know, I believe Michelle, the stipend was what, $2,000 for the director?
Yeah, he probably took that out, yeah.
Well, well, I don't know if it's, no, it may not be out, but what I'm just saying is, we take $2,000 and we divide it by 52 weeks, you know what I mean? How, how much are we really gonna expect this person is gonna oversee it any more than, you know what I mean, than the four of us currently?
And I understand that, and that's why when we were talking about this, it's easy to make an assumption, okay, it's gonna cost $10,000, then we're gonna let a bunch of volunteers, you know, be responsible, something that they should not be responsible for, because at the end of the day, we're responsible for it. And without having them sign an oath or this and that, dah, 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 you know, I mean, they're not a committee member, they're, they're just Joes on the street who wanna do a good thing, but at the end of the day, we're the ones that are gonna, you know, you know, take the heat on it. But why I'm saying, we still have to have some sort of plan. So if we put it on the ballot, we have to make sure we have something going. So if we put it on the ballot, we have to make sure we have something going forward. And I'm just throwing some ideas out. Now, if we do this, when you figure the director in, you're figuring the director into the cost, okay? So you got your cleaning costs, you got your key costs, you got your maintenance costs, then you got your director costs. What I'm saying is, I'm, I want to take it out of town hall at, to a, to a point. Obviously, we, we still got to oversee at some point, but I can't, we can't be having you guys going down daily to make sure things are done. You guys got town hall work to do. And so what I'm saying is, making, to come up with these numbers, that should be part of it, okay? I'm not saying we're going to do this right now because obviously if we go to the town meeting by ballot and the town says, yeah, we want this, then we have to go from there with some numbers. And we should have at least some numbers in our head or even at the ballot, so people understand what they're voting for. So I don't want to put that on, I don't want to put that on the ballot unless there's some sort of number that the town of active knows they're spending on. Because it'll get voted in, then we'll be in a quagmire, then we turn around and say, okay, it's going to cost this, and the people go, what the heck is this? You know? We thought this was going to be privately funded. And because right now it might be, but in six months it might not be. So we have to have a contingency plan and I just figure we have to, we have to look through our options right now. And that was just one, when I said the rec, that was just an idea.
One.
We could come, we could, you know, when I talked to one of the individuals that used the place, that had been a part of this whole deal, that, you know, they, they already meet together, you know, we, we create committees all the time, you know, I don't even like doing that, but at this point here, we have to have somebody to go to.
I would rather... I real, would rather have a gym committee, I think, than...
Yep, yep.
Than the, the rec, just because they, we don't have a director right now. The rec's not really...
The rec has a full place, plate and they have some openings on their committee. Remember last time we met?
We already had...
We took a resignation from the chairman.
Right, we already had the rec committee.
I just, I just, I just used the rec for some reason is they were looking for space to put their stuff, thought it might go, but I also threw the idea of doing another committee because of that reason. And, but at the end of the day, we need a number, a realistic number, because I, we can't be coming back to this and go, oh, we don't have any money. And especially right now with this, the COVID-19, you know, I mean, I think we'd be crazy to open it up in the next couple, three months anyways.
Right.
I don't want to open that up until we got the green light to go, because I believe that, yep.
I'm sorry. So, so I guess a few things, just so we can move on from tonight. If, if we're certain, based on the governor's recommendation, that we are not going to open this gym before June 30th, then Michelle, you give Michelle and I the go and we'll start refunding money and taking care of that piece of it. Because that's going to be, that's going to be a big part of it. Remember, you can't have more than 10 people together in May or June. So that's the first thing you need to decide. Is there any chance this is going to open before June 30th? Because we have town books to close out, refunds to issue and paperwork to do. So I need you to make that decision. And then the other decision really is, do you want to put it on the ballot? If you want to, if you want to put it on the ballot and give the voters the chance, then the three of you need to give us a list of, you know, we're not willing to put it on the ballot unless it, unless that figure includes these things and Michelle and I will work to get numbers for those, but we don't have time to do a committee or anything prior to. We're doing the secret ballot, the three of you have to come up with a number.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I personally don't think this is the year to be trying to push this thing forward. We've just cut the entire budget wherever we can to flatline it. I can see adding another $10,000 to the 4,600 that we've already cut out. So we're going to bring that up to somewhere in the 14, 6 range. Yeah, we get it in undesignated funds that we can pull it from, but we don't want to be doing that. And my, I'm still leaning, my biggest concern is the cleanliness, not only the wiping of everything down, but you get two or three people in there working out, you're hot, you're sweaty, you're breathing hard, you're, you're perspiring, you're, you know, you're putting a lot of air, a lot of things out of your lungs. I don't think this is the time to be even, even considering keeping the gym. I mean, I pushed hard to keep it back along because I, you know, I do believe it's a good thing to have, but I think our world has just changed. Leave it to the professionals. So I guess...
I still think that we should...
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not in favor of pushing this forward in any way. I hate to say it, but I'm going to, I'm going to stand firm on it, so. Go ahead, Kim.
I want to go forward.
Okay.
I want to go forward. I mean, at least let the people decide. And then we go from there. I mean, we're going to have to work on it and try to figure out, you know, what it's going to cost us for all the things we need to do. And then let the people decide and then, you know, go through the, we get it and get it up and running. And maybe it won't happen until August or September, it's going to take us some time.
Well, well, we can, we can, oop, you still there, Kim?
Yep, go ahead, Dave.
Oh, I, Kim was breaking up, I couldn't understand what you were saying. But, my thought, I think at this point in time, you know, there's all the stars aligned and everything, we keep it closed for the foreseeable future. We can get past town meeting, we refund everybody back, with the understanding that we're going to look for, you know, we can look forward and see what will happen down the road. And we, we're probably going to end up with a couple special town meetings at some point down the road. You know, we're talking, I don't see opening the gym up for another three months anyways, three to four months at this rate, you know, if you look at all the stuff that we got sent from the state, I mean, it would be out of our mind, open that up and, and create an issue. So at that point in time, even if we go beyond town meeting and we decide to put it on a special ballot at a later date, at least the people that, you know, want to keep this open have an idea that, you know, we, we're still working on it, we just got a crunch from numbers, we can do it at a later date, but at least give them the opportunity to vote on it at a later date. I don't, I don't, I don't believe voting it on at this town meeting is a good idea.
At a later date.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
So I guess I would, my first thing would be, so what happens with July, July's electric bill?
Somehow we, well, somehow we have to keep some money in there for the electricity and probably not the heat, because we can shut the heat down in that place and drain the water, so...
The other thing is that before, if you decide to not do anything with it, I just want to point out and remember that we told people that, you know, that, that we would hear their, hear what they had to say. I wasn't, I'm going to be honest, and, you know, and I wasn't expecting to go in that direction, so that's why I said to you, you know, we don't necessarily have to read them all, but...
Right.
Nope. Thank God for technology, I got to unmute Michelle. Dan, Dan, can we unmute Michelle? There she is, can you hear me, Michelle?
Gotcha.
Okay.
Gotcha, okay. I just want to, you know what I mean, on behalf of the people that are sending these in, you know, these are all gym-related, I don't want anybody to say that their statement wasn't read or heard or, you know, so I just want to give you the opportunity, if you want to hear them all.
No, you, get those, get those over to us so we can see them.
So you don't want me to read them aloud?
Oh, you can read, no, I mean, to read them, it's going to be...
I mean, before you take an actual, well, yes, but I mean, if, I just don't know if there's anything in here that would sway the vote. I mean, you're clear on where you stand, Kim's clear on where she stands. David, I think, is willing to look at it again in a couple of months. I just don't know if there's anything in any of these. I mean, I'm still getting emails now as we speak, but, but some of these are, are, you know, it's, it's run its course, closed it as well, so they're, they're mixed.
Can we have another week? I would like to read all those. And then, you know, maybe make a decision.
And we're going to be, I mean, pushing on time, sorry. Oop, David's...
I know.
So in, in reference to waiting to make a decision on a budget and so forth, a couple months, we have to have a budget with tax commitment? Or we're using undesignated funds?
Right.
And we need to, you know, one of the things in our new business is town departments, I mean, we have to get this warrant together next week, you know what I mean? We have to, you have to be in, I mean, now that we know that you support those cuts and you, that's the budget you want to move forward, Michelle and I can pretty up the warrant articles, we have to get Warren and Finance involved, you know, and get them on Zoom meetings right away to start looking at this. I mean, a secret ballot changes everything.
Right.
We, I, I do understand the idea that, you know, you have to make a task commitment. Now, we have special town meetings all the time, in the middle of summer or whenever, and I do understand that if you say they do vote it in, we decide, okay, they're down the road, you know, we need $15,000, so, you know, do whatever and dah 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 dah, and we put it on the ballot, you know, obviously we'll have to come out of the undesignated fund. But seeing we're not putting it on this ballot, is we do not have the time, I don't, I don't believe we have the time right now, do all our homework, get everybody together and make sure that we come up with a definitive number that's going to, you know, hold water, you know, to make it work without rushing this through. And I don't really want to cram this down the town of active's throat, last second without a real number. That's why I said, I'm, I can, I can bet the farm that we're going to have a special town meeting at some point beyond here because of the way things are right now. You know, we're going to have elections for committees possibly and other stuff that maybe we could slide it in then. But, you know, right now is the time that it really isn't a really big deal because I don't believe we should be opening it up just because of the health issues, because of COVID. After that, then we can, we can pull everything together and see what happens.
Okay. Michelle, can you, what, what's our electrical bill over there on a month, you know, on average? Do you know that?
Uh, $65 to $70 on...
Okay.
When it's, when it's running. It was pretty cheap this past month, but...
Yep, because actually, you know, we, we just, like I say, if we keep it shut down, you know, budget-wise, and I would say that would be for this particular budget, because we're going to need some money to at least keep the lights on over there. That's really our only expense right now, because that also runs our sign out front. That's where that power comes from, so, you know, if we can plug a number in for the electricity for that building...
Three months, six months? How many are you thinking?
I'm thinking a year.
Plug electricity in for a year?
Yeah, plug, yeah, but, but plug it in at not the $65, but whatever the, a little bit over what the minimum was for why it's closed, because that would be probably, it's probably what, 35, 40 bucks?
Yeah, I want to say it's, was 34, 96 maybe this past month.
Okay, so if you plugged in $40 times 12, you know, for, once again, it's still a town building, we still have to maintain it as a town building and you need electricity in there. That's really the only need in there.
What about oil if you're budgeting for a year?
Nope, I think, no, because I think, like Dave says, we're going to have another special town meeting at some point after, most likely after September. You know, we can, we can finagle something for oil, whether we get donations or whatever we do there, but, or we simply drain the water in the building and we just, you know, let that part of it go until we get ready to reopen it. But electricity, we need to keep on.
Yep.
So, that okay with, with both Dave and Kim? I heard a yes from Dave. Is that okay with you?
No, I didn't say nothing yet.
Oh.
I started to say, so what, so am I, am I, I'm still not hearing direction. Am I refunding everybody through June 30th due to COVID, it will not be reopened, am I, is that what I am hearing?
I would vote yes on that.
I would too, for right now, yep.
I would refund everything.
Until the end of June.
Yep.
And that will be, will be...
I would refund them completely.
We'll be prorating them from the date it was closed down...
Yep.
Through June 30th.
I agree. Dave, yes?
Yep, yep.
Kim?
And we stop fresh later on.
Yeah.
Kim, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
And as far as going forward, we are not putting it on a ballot question for the voters at this time.
Dave?
I can't, I can't convince either one of you to do it now?
I guess, I, I could be convinced to put it on the ballot without a dollar amount to see if in fact they want to keep it.
So what if they say yes?
Well, I mean, like I said...
You can't put it on, you can't put it on the ballot without some sort of number because...
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just cut the, we just cut the daylights out of the budget to try to, to try to save some money. The thing barely pays for itself, so...
That's why I said we have to do this later on down the road.
Yep, okay. So I guess, I guess you're not going to convince me and it doesn't sound like you're going to convince Dave to put it on right now.
I just, I just want to be fair, I just want to make sure that the taxpayers out there have a full vision of what they're voting for. And to throw a question at them saying, you want a gym or not? And people, sure, we do, but then the next thing you know, we throw another, later on down the road, we're going to throw a number, whatever, and they go, what the heck is that? We thought it was a free gym, you know?
Right.
So we, we got to have this, from now on, we, we got to make sure that, you know, there's more apparent, you know, what they're going to pay, you know?
Right. And I mean, that's the only way I'd want to put it out there too, so...
Okay. Okay.
And we're holding off on these. I will still send them to you, just in case anybody has a change of heart.
Yep.
But they are half and half. I mean, you're, you've got just as many people saying to close it as you do, saying, keep it open.
Okay, yeah, please send them to us, we do, we do want to see those.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they are important. Okay, anything else for the gyms from anyone? No? Okay, new business, department meetings?
So really, very quickly on this, so we do need to, based on the legislation, legislative action, we need to let some of our, we need to let the departments and committees start meeting again. They will have to meet via Zoom. It is the recommendation that we set them up through our IT, through the Town Administrator's Office, basically the, the department head, the, the chair or the, or the chair of the committee here at department, goodness. Will contact us and let us know when they want to meet, we'll schedule it, make, meet all the freedom of information. Our guy from behind the scenes will host the meeting, similar to, he's, similar to the way he's doing tonight, so that he can, you know, oversee the, the video and the audio and so forth, because Warren and Finance needs to start meeting, planning board certainly has some things going on, so we need to, need to let them start meeting so that we can, we can do that. And as the Warren and Finance, for example, the chair just is going to have to communicate with me as far as who they want to talk to, or if it's a public hearing, then we have to be able to tell our IT man, you know, that the public has to be able to speak and set it up in a certain way. So it's just going to take some finagling, but it's really just putting it out there to you guys to, you know, let's start teaching them how to use it if they don't know how to use it and we've got to get some meetings scheduled and start to try to move on a little bit.
Okay, yeah, definitely. I mean, if I was able to figure it out, they can figure it out. It's not that scary.
Nobody said anything, did you notice that?
Did.
Good job, Ed, you did good.
Okay.
So I, I, so if that's okay, what I would like to do is, um, what's, what's today, the day's gonna, today's Wednesday. I thought maybe Monday-ish, we could, um, invite the chairs of all of our committees to a Zoom meeting, the public will still be able to attend. Um, but just for the board to kinda update them on what's going on with the budget and, you know, the direction, in case they haven't seen this. And introduce them to Zoom and just kinda, you know, chat with just the chairs.
Yep, definitely, sounds good.
I'll schedule that for Monday.
Sounds good.
What time Monday?
Whatever time, whatever time you tell me.
I've got another, uh, I've got another, I've got another selectmen's meeting for another town uh, for work Monday night at six-thirty.
Um, we could do, um, is five-thirty too early?
No, I can do five-thirty.
Or we could do Tuesday, I just, I would, or I would even be more, maybe more active, and I hate to do it on a Friday night, but it's not like any of us can really go anywhere. Because I, they need to start scheduling it, and if we've got a, what, with the policy say ten days out, so we need to start getting scheduled, so I'd even do Friday before I do Tuesday.
Yeah, no, it's Monday.
But that's your call.
Yeah, it's Monday, the worst-case scenario, I bow out and, and, uh, you know.
And it's really just an FYI to see who needs help and, you know, what the, how it'll be set up on our end.
Yeah, just to get everybody hooked up and get, get them going, so, yep.
All right, so does that work for you, Kim, David?
Yep, that's fine with me.
Okay.
So five-thirty Monday, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, that sounds good. I guess your public comment topic? Do you have any, or?
I have a few that are not related to the gym.
Okay.
Uh, so one member, um, one member of the public said that, uh, she did watch last week's meeting, but she couldn't get the volume up, um, for a little while. It took her a little time to, to figure it out, uh, she thanks the grandkids for that. Um, wants to just point out that technology can be confusing, not everybody has the ability to Zoom. Um, she wondered if the Board of Selectmen would please consider going back to a regular type meeting at the town hall, not open to the public, but each of you sitting at a table, you can wear masks, that'd be a total of five people with us and the camera person. Um, public can watch it live on the cable that they're paying their franchise fees to, then they can watch it on YouTube. Um, and the public can continue to send the questions or concerns to be addressed at the meeting. Uh, she says it would make the meetings accessible to many more residents. The governor holds her press conferences this way, and she believes it could work for Acton too. Um, the governor even takes phone calls from the reporter, uh, in advance, so. That's something she'd like you to consider.
Thank you.
Gym-related, I know I have another one that's not gym-related, but I think you can answer it. Uh, just clarity about the general questions in general about voting. Um, asking if seasonal residents could vote because they pay their taxes and talk about absentee balloting. Unfortunately, in the state of Maine, you have to be a registered voter in that town to vote regardless of what the question is, so. Um, that's an unfortunately, no. My goodness. I waved them at you so many times, I got them in wrong order. And Jim be closed, okay. All right, so this one, I think we just kind of answered, but this, uh, this gentleman, um, wants to know when the planning board is going to meet to discuss, uh, the, the board had had a sit walk for his project on March fourteenth. At the next meeting, they were scheduled to go back and look at the findings and, uh, talk about next steps, so. I think we've answered that by saying that we're gonna reach out to the chairs on Monday and start getting some of these meetings scheduled, so that one should be good. Um, and then when do you anticipate having public hearings again? Um, the conversation again with Fluehland is that the legislative body gave an executive order that allows these public hearings and these meetings to be happening via Zoom. So we need to start letting them happen now that things, you know, now that it's May first.
Yep.
And, um, keep moving.
Yep.
So, we'll be reaching out tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
It smells smoke.
That's not good.
I'm gonna wave and just go.
Okay. Okay, uh, I guess we don't have any announcements, we've pretty much covered everything there. Um, I mean, the general announcement, everybody please stay safe and just, it's a frustrating time for, for a lot, it's, uh, confusing. But I think, uh, I think with what the governor said the other day, even though I don't agree with a lot of it, but I think we're headed in the right direction and we'll see where we go. Um, but we'll get the town hall back open, at least.
Oh, yeah, we didn't talk about that.
No.
I'm so sorry, um, yay, yeah, that's something big, huh?
Yeah.
So we have a staff meeting scheduled, uh, tomorrow at six o'clock, right? Ed, you're gonna be the selectman liaison.
I can.
It's gonna be, um, yep, I think that's what we decided. David did the first one, and Kim said she was fine either way. Um, so yeah, we need to talk about that at the town hall, um. So we certainly wanna hear the input, um, from all of the staff. Um, it is, you know, in, in regards to personal, um, what we could do to help them feel more protected at the workplace. Uh, code enforcement's got some good ideas, um, we've got some ideas up top. But I think at the end of it, based on the, the governor's orders, we do need to, to open back up, but the public needs to understand that there's going to be guidelines in place, and there's gonna be areas roped off and the six feet apart, you know, we're only gonna allow, we can only allow ten people in the building. We still have to follow all those guidelines, um. But assuming that we can come up with all those and what that looks like, uh, tomorrow with, with department heads, um, we're expecting to open back up on Tuesday. Which would be May, what is that?
Fourth.
Fourth, is it? Um, sorry. May fifth, is that Tuesday? Fifth. Um, you know, we, we kinda have to have the idea, and I guess this would be a good time for Kim or David, um, because they won't be part of that staff meeting. They have ideas or concerns or things you wanna see us do or not do, you know, input that Ed can kinda share.
People gonna be, um, asked to wear masks before they come in the building?
The way that I read the executive order, and I know that Michelle has been in my godsend reading the fine print behind me, is that, that the law, it says that if you need to wear a mask when social distancing cannot be obtained. So I don't read it as you have to wear a mask out in public. I read it as when social distancing can't be obtained. Michelle?
Yeah, so when you're in, when you're in stores and you're in close quarters with people, but, I mean, we had the barrier at town hall, so. And in-house staff, I mean, we could, we can stay away from each other pretty well.
So, one thing that we've done, um, we, we were proactive, we, um, and I'm glad that we did this before the governor's order came. Um, we had an opportunity through Portland Paper Products, who gets us our paper products, to order, um, a case of masks. Um, we've got sanitizer coming from a local business, and we've got, um, gloves, so. You know, we've, they, they have a plan downstairs, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into all that yet, but they're going to be safe based on the plan. We have the Plexiglas on one of the windows, um, it's, it's voting season, we're making up for a month lost time. I'd really like to try to get some Plexiglas on the other window, or we're not gonna, not gonna be able to open that window. But, you know, Ken and I have had the conversations that, you know, I'm not going downstairs, he's not coming upstairs, we're kinda just, you know, doing what we can via phone and meeting halfway if we have things that need to be swapped, um, but we're gonna, we need to find a way to keep the least amount of people in that building and touching the least amount of things, so you walk into the window, you turn around and walk out.
By opening up the window, that's not, that's not keeping a lot of people out.
True, and they probably wouldn't be six feet, feet apart, so you're probably right, Ed, I should probably just try to one window.
No, and, and let it go with that. But, and, and stress people, as you know, stress to them, they can do a lot of that online, they can register to vote online.
Well, and what, and I hate to say, but what's interesting is, um, they're actually, inland fisheries in the state and, and Department of Motor Vehicle have reached out to the towns now asking basically, when are you going to reopen? They're looking for some relief. There are hundreds of thousands of registrations deep.
Okay, I can understand that.
And they're, you know, they're months out. Sorry, David.
Uh, the only, I, I mean, I, yeah, there you go. Um, that's awesome. So.
Awesome.
I know you guys have got your, your plan down and all that for behind, behind the Plexiglas, down, down with code enforcement, sounds great and all that. Uh, you're talking about ten people in the building. Uh, I know right now, a lot of them are doing five, like, stores, five customers, this and that. The only, the only thing that I'm worried about is if you have, say, five or ten people come in to the town hall and they're closing an area right where the window is.
Oh, we won't.
Do what we did before and we're gonna put them out in the town hall, or?
Well, and, and, and that's what we kinda talked about, I mean, we originally thought about changing the entrance through just having them come through the election hall, so that the weight was going that way. So that they could come in through the election hall, line up by the bathroom and go out the front, so they were doing it that way. Thinking about that more, we run into the more things that they can touch and the longer the line can get. Um, you know, we've got mixed towns, we've got some towns that aren't opening till June, we're gonna have the same conversation in Shapley tomorrow. Shapley's talking about doing by appointment only. I mean, you know, I don't know, David, yet, what, what the best solution is, if we can't have small space.
Well, I mean.
What if it rains? And I have people, you know, we leave it on the front door.
Could you mark the floor so that you have people in that building six feet between them?
Right, but then if the staff has to use the restroom, I have staff rights that we have to protect, do you know what I mean? And if they're lined up in that hallway to go into the election hall, that's a problem.
I would, I would bring them in the main entrance one at a time, one at a time through the door. Exit through the election hall. If someone needs to use the restroom, ask the customer to step aside. Simple.
But if they're exiting that way, that might be okay, there wouldn't be a line, right?
Right. Yeah, your line is actually gonna be outside the door.
So that's my only thing, so in bad weather, what am I doing?
They're sitting in the car till they see that they can come in.
Okay, and, and we're fine with that, I mean, that's,
Yeah.
we have, right, we're trying to open, but we have to keep the staff, keep everybody safe, including residents.
Yep, yep.
I had to, um, today I had to go to Blue Seal, and we had to pull in and then you call.
Yeah.
I don't know if something like that would work with you, Jennifer, if the weather was bad. So then you would know who was there first, second, third.
All the, all the vendors that I'm using for all my, um, the materials, the same thing, when we show up, I gotta call it in. My guys go down, they sit in the yard, they gather stuff, bring it out to them, then they leave, but I mean, the only reason I was thinking that, coming in, coming in through the election hall and, uh, put a sign up saying, you know, no more than four people or five people at a time, and give them designated spots, that way they would take care of the weather issue and they can't come into the hallway until, you know, they're called upon. But, um, do otherwise a phone call, I think is, unless, you know, I guess if someone doesn't have a cell phone, I mean, there are not too many of those, I guess, but, um, most people do, but I'm just trying to think of a way to make it easier and still, I mean, when people are going in and out of stores, they're going into Walmart, uh, stuff like that, I just don't, I just don't feel that one person at a time. I mean, that's gonna be more of a pain in the tail end than anything, um, you've got that whole town hall in there. Take a couple of box in areas, sign areas, you know, move them one, two, three, four, you know? And then move on when you're called upon. Um, that way there, they don't have to wait in their cars, cuz the problem they're also gonna have is someone pulls in, they think they're more important, they cut that guy off who didn't realize the other person came out, then you got another problem. So, um, I don't know, I just, I just think using the town hall would be beneficial. I'm not really worried about them. I mean, they should be coming in with their, you know, if they're worried about it, they should be coming in with gloves.
Well, if, if they're coming in, I think if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to require masks coming into the hall.
You could, you could, yeah, that's a good idea.
Signs that say do not touch anything.
Yep, I'm more worried about, like I say, it's not the touching, it's the breathing, it's the, it comes.
Right, and masks, yep.
Mask is required beyond this point, till you exit the building.
You're thinking, you're thinking in, um, so you're thinking, going in through the election hall, but force them to wear masks the whole time they're in the building?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And make them wait their turn in, in the hall, not.
Mark off six-foot spots, and there you go.
Yep.
Yeah, right on the, there in the hall area, that way there, you know, um, you know, at least you don't have to worry about people cutting each other off, someone who doesn't have a cell phone and everything else, and.
Yep. Stop them.
Nobody has a problem going down to Seven-Eleven to get their lottery ticket.
Stop them between the two restrooms, that you're, that's as close as you can get until the person exits the window. That way the person can exit without, without any problem, so.
Are we, um?
Would you like me to go down and grab some Plexiglas?
Well, no, I mean, it makes sense, I mean, I don't think that's six feet apart, those two windows anyways, are they?
No, there isn't, no, I would not open a second window.
Right. The only reason that I would say yes to that, um, Edward, is because of, for handicap people or people that want to, um, that need to sit during their transactions, we'd still only have one window open.
Yep.
Do you know what I mean? But some people have to work with that, but we can go back, we can figure that out, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can make you another, I can make you another Plexiglas piece. I'm, I'm foreseeing this not going away as far as the Plexiglas anyway. So I'm probably gonna make a new frame.
What?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a frame, and we'll, we'll fix your window, we'll make it so both windows can be Plexiglassed and, and go from there.
Jen, um, over in Shapley, those, they, they have a glass window there anyways, don't they?
Yeah, they slide, I think.
They do slide. I, I, I really think at some point we oughta really look at doing that anyways. You know, um, I, you know, back, you know, you get some fruitcake who, you know, comes in.
Ah, I don't wanna talk about.
For protection or something like that. I think at some point we are really, uh, look at maybe even putting a permanent one in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So last question, so, can I just, one last quick question, Ed, Ken? So if we're gonna require masks in there, um, can we, I mean, we've bought this case essentially with taxpayer money, if they don't have one, can I give them out? Those disposable ones?
Yes.
So we should, okay.
I would think, yep. Yep. Um, so there's a, so we have a, uh, department head meeting tomorrow night, that's not live to the public, it's only one selectman going to it, so, yeah, and that's where that's gonna be. We have a, another meeting next Monday night at five-thirty for the, um, department, uh, for the committees, to get them up to speed. And that's where we're headed.
Maybe Wednesday, maybe Wednesday for the warrant.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, at this point.
What time Wednesday?
In time six?
Yep. Yep. So at this point, Kim, do you have anything else to add?
I don't, I don't, thank you.
Okay, David?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, Michelle?
I'm good, stay safe, everybody.
Jennifer?
You too.
Okay, and I don't have anything else, other than like, like Michelle says, stay safe, and we're, I think we're well on our way now to, uh, getting, getting the town hall back open and making things happen and get back to business, as usual, as much as usual as we can do, so. Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the April twenty-ninth meeting.
And I'll second that.
Moving to second it to adjourn the meeting, it is seven twenty-eight PM. Um, okay, all those in favor?